No. But there was still wa- yeah, it was a contact, but there's still water getting into the box. That's the issue.
Yeah.
Wow.
They didn't necessarily agree.
Yeah.
They fixed it.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Seal it all up.
It's my show.
And as I can.
I'll sleep.
Kind of surprised that. Didn't this eatery pay for like the last three months of the year for liquor licenses?
Yeah, they did. They really wanted to be open by in October. And that didn't happen, of course, as opposed.
Now they can't.
Yeah, now they can't, so that might be something.
All right, it is six with a call meeting order, open the budget legions, please.
Atlantic Legion stew the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, just to note that we do have councilors Gilmore and Rinkie zooming in tonight. And I see that Sean at least has a shirt and tie on. Len is not as formally attired, so thank you, Sean, for holding or raising the standards here. And just to note that Belinda will be, I think, keeping an eye on those two if they want to chime in or whatever to try and keep an eye on that. Other than that, just to report that City Hall will be closed both Thursday for Thanksgiving and Friday, so don't plan on coming in for anything on Thursday or Friday. And that is my report, Councillor LeBeau.
I attended our special city council meeting that we had, and that is it.
Okay, Councillor Hertzberg.
We have the campus special meeting. And the eighteenth, we had a property and negotiation meeting.
All right, thank you, Councillor Rinkie.
We had a property negotiations meeting and a policies and procedures meeting.
Policies and procedures, you guys meet like every day, right?
Only at one's request.
And Councillor Gilmore.
A policies and procedures meeting.
All right. Thank you, we do have a couple department head reports, we'll start with Belinda Ludwig.
You know, I really don't have a lot, you stole my thunder in announcing that City Hall was closed Thursday and Friday.
Sorry.
And just encouraging people with the COVID numbers continuing to increase, we are still able to do motor vehicle using our drop off box outside the one that's marked City of Painesville, not West Central. And mail in options are always the tab or manuals, just make sure you put your phone number, mailing address on the paperwork with a blank check, we will send you then a copy of that check with the receipt. Anything city related, you could always drop off your building permits in the drop box, any way to encourage people to not come in if they can help it.
Okay, any questions for Belinda? Okay, a hearing none, we'll move on to Ron Mergen.
All right, thank you, first of all, on your informational and your, the agenda package, you can see there's a letter from the Department of Health. That informs us that we now have to do three bacteriological samples instead of two. Also then in the Water Department, the VOC plant, the repiping, that is in progress right now, anticipated about approximately a month or so to complete. At the airport, just reviewing the fuel usage over the year, currently we're just over 14,000 gallons. The previously, the most we'd ever done was about 13,000, so we still have about a good month to go, so it's very possible we could hit 15,000 gallons. Also at the airport, though, we did lose one pilot, he is headed out to, he took a different job out west, so we will have one vacancy currently. Now at the compost, I guess I would like to thank everyone for their donations. To date, we've, we're currently over $1,600. And also we did submit the SCORE grant. That is, I think it was $3,000 that supports the recycling at the compost, and also we can utilize those funds for the household hazardous waste cleanup. And in the parks, we do have the park comp plan, which we'll be going through in the agenda a little bit later. And then also there's a little bit of a local push to get the Glacier Lakes Trail completed. That's a trail from Wilmer that will eventually go all the way to St. Joe. There's one seven mile stretch locally here that is not complete. The DNR noted that they are pursuing getting the portion done from Roscoe up to Old Painesville. And from there, the local push will be to try to bring it in through town. That trail committee will have to be revitalized, put together again, and pursue the funding for that project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, any questions for Ron? Okay, hearing none, then we have the consent agenda before us, which should be the minutes from those seven meetings on page one, the vouchers on page two totaling $319,753.40. And then the, Carly Brockner has submitted her resignation, and she has amended that from a year and a month to one month notice in the update. It's December 31st of 2020. And the motion to approve that effective December 31st, 2020.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by, I believe that was Rinkie. Discussion?
Nope. Just, I think we should take Kylie's resignation out so we can vote it down, but that's probably frowned upon.
Okay. All right. You had your hand up, Neil, was?
I think I seconded.
Oh, you did, okay, it's hard to kind of tell here, so, okay, so it was a motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg. Any other discussion or corrections? Not all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None? There was a couple lies from the remotes, I assume? Carried?
Yes.
Yep, all right. All right. Then the first item in new business is the 2021 liquor licenses, and they are listed there. Painesville American Legion Post 271, Queen Bee's Bar and Grill, Inc., and the Eatery at 112 LLC.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2021 on sale liquor and Sunday liquor licenses for the Painesville American Legion Post 271, Queen Bee's Bar and Grill, Inc., and the Eatery at 112 LLC.
Was that Rinkie that seconded?
Who seconded?
Me.
Oh, Gilmore, okay. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Gilmore, to approve those 2021 on sale liquor and Sunday liquor licenses as on the action sheet, discussion? All in favor, aye?
I believe that with issue fees already been paid.
Yes, I've already deposited the checks.
So if we wanted to do some sort of relief, again, it would have to be in the form of a refund?
Which is probably a better way to track it anyway, Sean, so yes, that would be.
Yep, because I think by statute, they're probably required to be paid before we can even issue them, aren't they?
I think so.
Yep.
I was just wondering if we shouldn't look at another refund, given there's another at least four weeks of being closed.
Well, these are for '21.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that goes into effect for next year.
Yeah, we can always take a look back on 2020, because it'll be at least four weeks potentially longer, so. Anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, that carried. Okay, next item is we have received a notice of resignation from Gene Nichols, part time liquor store clerk, effective on 30th of November, so we're looking for a motion to accept that.
I'll make.
Make a motion to accept the resignation from Gene Nichols, part time liquor store clerk.
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Hertzberg, to accept the resignation from Gene Nichols, part time liquor store clerk, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, that carried. And then we'd like a motion to start the hiring process for a part time liquor store clerk and create an eligibility list for such.
I'll make the.
I'll give LeBeau the motion and Rinkie the second, because you basically hit the same thing, same time. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, that carried. Thank you. Then the next item, we've had a couple city ad hoc boards that have completed their, their work, the ad hoc front counter board and the ad hoc library development board. And maybe it's not necessarily completed, but they have done what they have tried to set out to do, and we have moved on other ways.
I was just thinking about the ad hoc front counter board, would it make sense to keep that one around just to look into the furniture rearranging and stuff with Jennifer and Belinda and what other, other things we were discussing at our last meeting?
No. Potentially.
Maybe just leave it there for Tarek, and then we can fill it in February if it doesn't go anywhere?
I would go with that for the process. If we start spending all the money on the furniture and so forth, maybe they need to look into something else at the same time. So I would go along with Sean on keeping the front counter board, because it's, that would make more sense.
I'll move to disband the ad hoc library development board.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau, to disband the ad hoc library development board. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, and that carried. And as Ron alluded to, we have some airport things coming up here. We have to, are looking to approve a T hangar lease between Peter Dillon and then also a storage one for Jeremy Brettger, Ron?
That pretty much tells it, we do have a gentleman moving in, and the other storage unit that we did have available is also now rented, so.
And just to note that that storage is a part of the hangar, that's not usable or functional for an aircraft, so.
That is correct.
Yep. Not like we're starting to rent storage out there to the.
I'll make the motion to approve the T hangar lease between Peter Dillon and the City of Painesville for hangar number 10 in the amount of $100 per month, and a storage garage lease between Jeremy Brettger and the City of Painesville for a storage garage in the amount of $75 per month.
Second.
That, Rinkie? Okay, motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie, to approve the T hangar lease between Peter Dillon and the City of Painesville for hangar number 10, in the amount of $100 per month, and a storage garage lease between Jeremy Brettger and the City of Painesville for a storage garage in the amount of $75 per month, any discussion?
Ron, on the storage, what kind of dimensions, how big is that, the storage area?
It is exactly half of a T hangar. So square footage, you would guess it's.
16 by 24, it says in the lease.
16 by 24?
Anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None, and that carried. And as Ron had alluded to, also the comp park for the, comp park. Comp has a plan for the park system in the city is being updated or looks to be updated here. This actually goes back to like 2008, as you can see, it's been updated a few times, so Ron, do you want to?
Okay, thank you, as the mayor noted, the original was done in 2008. It covers our eight park systems, two of which are neighborhood parks, a nature, and a naturehood park. I guess I am just going to go through most of the proposed plans that we do have currently. I guess I would be on page 32 of the agenda. Our park improvements, first of all, at the gazebo, we've done a lot of work there over the last number of years. What the committee had kind of noted is the gazebo needs a little TLC, and mainly in its roof, they looked at possibly putting a skylight in, a ramp, a wind block. So it will be more going back to the park board with some estimated costs. But for the most part, our money, or we would be looking at the Ampe Park, which we will get to in a little bit. South Street Park, actually both of the neighborhood, South Street and Maple Street Park, we'll just be replacing equipment, trees on an as needed basis. Most of the equipment out there, we probably have a 20 year lifespan, I think it was put in about six, eight years ago, so. And I would be, again, the same for the Maple Street Park. Then on the Ampe Park, proposed amenities out there, number one, when we do have soccer games out there, I guess we've seen crowds is probably as big as that 250. So the number one priority is try to get a restroom, storage area out there, along with some type of shelter and pavilion and a playground area. We'd also like to expand that sprinkler system that we currently have out there when it is being utilized for soccer. There are a lot of people and it's used every day. Then a nature, some kind of nature barrier, get some trees out there and trails, walking path, and obviously benches, picnic tables, et cetera. Cost wise out there, just for the restrooms, a few years ago when we built those into community park, we were looking at about 45,000, obviously it's going to be a little more. The shelter, pavilion, depending on the design, that could be easily be from anywhere to 100 to another 150. So playground equipment, you know, just with what we put in the, in the gazebo park and out at the beach, you know, that was almost, was actually over 100,000. So like I said, the majority of our next few years budgets will be aimed at the Ampe Park. Nature Park, I did have a little conversation with the people who are running that, and they're still looking at a possibly adding some land on the north side of the river and some type of a pedestrian bridge to get across the river. Obviously, those will take some additional funding, so he didn't have any timeline on any of that. Veterans Park, you can see by the number of things or existing amenities there, what we've all done over the years. But for the next few years, mainly we would like to replace the trail that goes up to the beach and around the north end. And the biggest thing out there is reconfiguring the boat parking. There has been a huge surge in the number of boats, boats and trailers that we are seeing out there. So that will be one of the biggest things that the committee is tackling right now. And then out at the Community Park, I guess what we'd like to do is reseed the majority of that park and add some type of a basketball slash pickleball court, and possibly a skate park, and some, possibly some new signage there. And then at the Veterans Memorial Park, that would be run pretty much on a status quo. There's a pretty small park, so we wouldn't be doing, just maintaining it, that would be about it. And then we do have some estimated costs on, I think it's page 50, you know, the total would be approximately 580,000. And we do have inserted our neighborhood park policy, and again, for anybody who doesn't know, the neighborhoods, they do need to maintain that park, if they do not, it was in there that the city then has the option to look at possibly selling it. I guess if there's any questions, I'd be glad to field them, or?
Just one, and then, you know, the neighborhood parks, that, that seems to be working out well with maintenance.
It does, yes. Yep, the neighborhoods, they take a special pride in them, and they do an extremely good job of maintaining them, trimming, mowing, et cetera, yes.
Ron, am I reading this right, that a pedestrian bridge out at the nature park is estimated at 300,000?
A bridge to get across the river, yes, that would probably be on the very low end. Chuck, you could maybe back me up on that also?
Yeah, I think that would probably be towards the low side. It depends on the span, is the big thing.
The, the, the one out at the, on the south end of Cronus over the, you know, the carp trap or that bridge there, do you remember what that cost was when that was moved off the bridge and the pedestrian bridges put in?
If I had to guess, I thought it was more than a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I believe it was.
And was that one that was moved in? Or was it built? I forget.
That one was built there, if you're talking about the wood ones.
Yeah.
I remember on, right, that one got, got to be over 100 feet long, and that's one of those critical points where they start to get really expensive depending on the span.
And a reminder that this is just a plan, it's nothing carved in stone, and just gives us something to pull out in the case, if you look at something like grants or, you know, other types of things, it's a handy tool to have on hand.
How, how wide a span is the river? At least 100, huh?
I think the biggest obstacle we'll have there also is that, obviously, it is in a 100 year flood plain. So somehow that would have to be overcome also. But the span, yes, I believe would be about 100 feet.
This is Sean, I will move to approve the amended comprehensive park plan.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau, to approve the amended comprehensive park plan, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that carried. You, then on to whole business, and Belinda will give us an update on the PTO hours and why we're talking about it now.
So back in, toward the earlier part of COVID, the, it was brought to the council's attention that there were some staff, due to COVID and due to the absence of administrator, that were getting awfully close or maxing out on their PTO time. So the council had said that they would up the max from 325 hours to 400 hours through the end of the year, and to bring it back in November to discuss it and see where we're at. What we're running into a little bit is we have eight employees that are over the 325. Some of those employees are over the 325 due to positive cases of COVID or people having to quarantine, so they're not able to take off because they're having to cover shifts, they're having to rearrange staffing. The admin office, it is, it's hit the admin office with Stephanie also leaving now. We're trying to do the accounts payable and payroll on top of admin duties. So we do have eight employees that are kind of still in that hotspot. I, I went out and looked today, there is about half of those employees that are take, they have planned time off coming up, but it probably won't be enough to get them down below the 325. So I guess my request to you would be maybe to look at extending that. January and February are not good months to try to take off PTO and admin because of the audit, unfortunately. So I think in order to be honest, it would have to be extended a little further than that. Otherwise, on the end of December, the way payroll, the in code system works is we would turn that button back to 325, and whatever balance anyone has above that, it would just be wiped off. So that is the update.
Do we have any over 400 right now?
We do not.
So everybody's under 400?
Everybody is under 400. And it appears that of the eight people that are in risk of being over, we run anywhere from right at 350 to right at 390. And my thought was maybe we could extend it out to June and hope that by then everything's back to normal or as normal as we can be.
Would it be realistic to make the number 375 to extend out to June?
If you did 375, I, I did calculate in, everybody's accrual that they'll get in December, you would have currently two people that are over that. I know one of them is planning on taking time off to get down below it, but.
So you think it would help us if we extended the same thing we're doing right now until first or second meeting in February? To see where we're going and see if everybody can, they get their time off and so forth, or not?
I don't know that January, February would help a whole lot, just because that's audit season, Len. And with Tarek just coming, you know, he's, he's, there's going to be that learning curve there, there's going to be a lot of work with him. Something will have to be done, obviously, with Steph's position or some rearrangement of that position when Tarek gets here.
Well. Nobody's going over by our next meeting, are they, that you know of?
Nobody is going over, I have calculated out through the end of December, and we have one person that would be at 390, one at 380, one at 370, two right at about 365, and three at about 350.
So what happens come January?
December 31st, we would, if, the way it stands right now, the way the council's motion stands right now is I would turn that button off in in code from 400 to 325, and anybody that has over 325 would lose those hours, and they would also not be able to earn any more.
So at the 400, like the person who has 390 going into January would have to use some, or?
Well, that person would have to potentially use 65 hours in December.
I mean, even if we have the 400 extension into next year?
If, yeah, if we went into next year, they would still come January have to use some hours because they're going to accumulate more, I did include their December accumulation in this figure.
That's why I'd kind of like to wean it from 400, let's get 380, 375, let's go in the right direction.
Well, what Belinda's saying is if you do that, people are going to be losing their PTO time, because they won't have opportunity to use it.
Well.
In the next few months.
How many hours can people turn in at the end of the year?
None on PTO.
No PTO?
No buyout on PTO unless you change that, if you.
Is that something that would have to be approved by the union?
I, I would assume it had to be an MOU, but I mean, it's kind of a benefit for the employees, so I can't imagine the union would have a problem with it. We can buy out our comp time, Len.
Okay, that's, but not your PTO time.
Not our PTO.
Simplest would be, I think, to extend the existing, what the, what the council had.
Probably, I just don't think until February.
At the end of the first quarter or sometime beyond that, sounds like.
Okay, just throw something out there quick, since this is all COVID related, basically all the PTO hours and so forth. And if we have COVID money or if we don't, it doesn't matter, but how would it work, since we don't pay for PTO hours, if there was the option for the employees? since we don't pay for PTO hours if there was the option for the employees to get, to turn in, let's say, a hundred hours for fifty percent instead of them losing it if it came down to that?
Would that apply for COVID? Because you'd have to prove that it was due to COVID that they were up at that area.
And I think part of the staff is, it might, it would be hard to prove, but I think part of the staff is affected by COVID. I think your admin staff is probably affected more from the administrator being gone and now Stephanie being gone than from COVID.
I just don't want anybody to lose it if there's, you know, I mean...
That's the thing, Len, I mean, I really, I hate to see any of these people lose it because they've stepped up to the plate. These people have worked really hard trying to keep the city going.
I, I agree with Jeff, I think the best thing that we can do is to extend that at least into next year sometime.
Can we look at this again on the fourteenth and do some soul checking and see what we can come up with?
Yep, we could, said that we don't have to, you know, act on it now, we can do some, some thinking. Okay.
I like Ron's idea of saying if we can do a payout, so that might be worth exploring between now and the fourteenth, if that's something that we could work out with the union or if any employees are even interested in it.
I'm not really in favor of payout, I think that sets a bad precedent. You do it once and all at once, you...
Well, I think we've got a precedence already with COVID.
It's unprecedented.
That's probably, you know, my, my concern is if it would be legal under the, you know, the restrictions for how to handle that care's money or whatever, so.
Well, Len, the care's money is spent.
That's spent, yep.
So...
Okay, we will put this on the agenda for the first meeting in December, which coincidentally is also our truth in taxation.
And I guess if there's any way, Belinda, to find out, like how that may impact our budget for this year if we were to do a buyout on that? I don't know if there's any way to figure that out, but if there's...
Well, it would depend on how many hours you'd let them buy out and...
I guess what happens if some are interested in the buyout and others maybe aren't, but then they're forced into losing it by what we said, so.
And is that fair to the guy that's at three twenty-five?
Yeah.
You're kind of penalizing him for playing the game? So...
These, the staff that we have on the list are all over three twenty-five, there's nobody else even close to three twenty-five.
All right, Melissa will show up on the fourteenth and we'll move on to item B, which is hiring of firefighters. They, they, or we received four applications and three were interviewed. Chief Andy is requesting to hire Dakota Crumery, Jeremiah Den, and Brody Strand as volunteer firefighters upon completion of one-year probation.
Okay, um, I'll make the motion to hire Dakota Crumery, Jeremiah Den, and Brody Strand as Painesville volunteer firefighters upon the completion of one-year probation. I gotta ask a question, though.
Okay, we should get a second.
A second.
Okay, we have two seconds, so you're going to ask two questions.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Now, this is also on the completion of their background check, correct? Don't they have to have a background check? Or not?
I'm looking at Paul because I don't know.
And I'm looking at Paul because traditionally initiated by the Department of, by the fire department.
Traditionally, we run background checks on the firefighters. I haven't received anything on it to run a background check yet, so.
Can you hear him, Len?
No.
So Paul said that traditionally we do do background checks on the firefighters, on new firefighter hires. He has not received anything from Andy at this point.
Um, he hasn't received what?
Anything from Andy to do so yet.
Oh, right, but I mean, if they fail that background check, then they can't get hired.
Correct.
That's what I was asking about my motion, I guess.
Okay.
Make it part of the motion.
Yeah, we, technically it hasn't been repeated, so you can reword your motion to include that, you know, contingent on passing their background checks. And if that's okay with Alicia, Councilor LeBeau, that's what the motion would be.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Other discussion? So the motion is to hire Dakota Crumery, Jeremiah Den, and Brody Strand as Painesville volunteer firefighters contingent upon passing the background check and the completion of one-year probation. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. Thanks, Len. Okay, and the next one is Ron will give us a good news report here.
Okay, the, from the Department of Health, the Source Water Protection Grant and the Wellhead Program. The grant that we had applied for has been approved and that is again for our, to continue our well sealing program. So if anyone does have any wells that they're currently not using or abandoned, we do have the funds available to get them sealed up. And the other part would be our Wellhead Newsletter, which we will be putting out again early spring sometime. The other portion that we normally apply for would be the Water Festival, but at this time, the Department of Health does not want to see something that might be a question. We put it on there, they want us to use the money. So they had recommended not putting it on at this time. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the Minnesota Department of Health Source Water Grant and authorize the mayor enacting co-city administrator to sign the document.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau, exactly as on the action sheet, page sixty-four, in regards to the Department of Health Source Water Grant, and discussion? I just have one question, you know, as far as capping the wells, is that only within the city or is it within the wellhead protection area?
It is within the entire wellhead protection area.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought, so, because there really, there shouldn't be any uncapped wells in the city, are there?
Well, there's far more than you would think.
Oh, okay.
Many of them are old prior to...
Oh, okay.
The area having water in it, so yes, there are some.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. And the last item here is, I know there was some discussion at the last meeting, which was that special meeting to canvas the ballots about the city service recognition luncheon, whether or not to have it or not, but it, we can't have it because there's no place to go. So we're looking for a motion to cancel that until the pandemic limitations allow it.
Motion to cancel.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau to cancel the city service recognition until the pandemic limitations allow it to happen safely. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. That's it for business, the rest is informational. We have the note there from Jeremy Willner at Mag Wealth Management that he's keeping an eye on, on various investment funds for the city. Not much that can be done right now. The note there from the, to Ron about the increasing the coliform samples from two to three, so more work for you guys to do. And the note, or the monthly report, bless you, from West Central Sanitation, a note there that the financials and other reports are on the city website and then the December, January meeting schedules. With that, I was going to say have a happy Thanksgiving, but stay home and be healthy, I guess. Have a healthy Thanksgiving, we're adjourned.